Good evening. Welcome to the City of West Miami. Today is Wednesday, May 18, 2016. For the invocation, Ms. Aguilar.
Thank you. Please rise and let's bow our head this evening and praise our Lord and thank Him for our daily blessings. Tonight, we pray for a young student who was stabbed in our community at a local high school so that he can recover from his injury. And we pray so that our youngsters, our children and grandchildren, rise above violence and adversity. We pray for our leaders so that they can lead with integrity, honesty, and make decisions that have a positive impact in the lives of those whom they serve. As we get closer to the upcoming Memorial Day holiday, we pray for our military personnel so that they can safely return home for duty. And we keep those that have lost their lives in combat, we pray for them and for their families. We pray for a better world, for peace, and for our future generations, all in your name. Amen.
Amen. Captain, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item three, roll call. Commissioner Luciana Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Ronda Rodriguez.
Present.
Commissioner Juan Blanes.
Present.
Vice Mayor Candida Blanca.
Yes.
Mayor Eduardo Mujinha.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item?
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for April 18, 2016 induction ceremony.
Motion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Presentation of minutes for approval for April 20, 2016, regular city commission meeting.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Presentation of minutes for approval for May 4, 2016, regular city commission meeting. Mayor Mujinha and Commissioner Blanes abstain.
Motion? Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Before we go into item five, I would like to take a quick moment to, we have a visitor. We have John Correa. Did I pronounce it right?
Correa.
Correa, okay, all right. We have him present, Representative House District 114. Please come forward. Welcome to the City of West Miami, once again.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you all for the opportunity to address you at this meeting. I'm a native of this city. My grandfather Candido Urtiaga and grandmother Elena Catalina Urtiaga bought the home at 6150 Southwest 16th Terrace for $19,000 in 1966. That's where they lived until they both passed away and where my four aunts, uncles, and my mother grew up and then where I grew up. I'm honored to be with you here tonight because this is very much home. I left this community in 1996. I graduated from Christopher Columbus High School. I went to Harvard College and Harvard Law School. I worked on Wall Street. I worked for a federal judge. And then I came home as an Assistant United States Attorney. I was a federal prosecutor in this community where I fought against violent crime, human trafficking, Medicare fraud. And I'm now a partner at a litigation firm here in Miami. And it's my honor to be running to represent my hometown and this community in the state legislature. I've never held elected office before, but I'm honored to count the support of so many residents here in West Miami and also so many members of our Dade delegation who are working together to make sure that economic mobility is a priority for all residents of Miami-Dade County, to make sure that our schools have no rival anywhere in the world, to make sure that vocational training is available for students and workers at all levels so that they can compete in the global marketplace, and to make sure that communities like West Miami, my hometown, remain the kind of place where people want to raise a family like I've chosen to raise mine. I have two children. My son Jonas is five, my daughter Eden is three. My wife is a physician. She's an attending at Mercy Hospital. She's an intensive care unit physician. She did everything I did a little better. She graduated from Harvard summa cum laude and was at the top of her class at Johns Hopkins Medical School. Now she teaches at FIU Medical School and is also an attending physician at ICU at Mercy. I say all of this because I think if anyone's watching at home or you sitting behind that dais should know that folks who care about this community and who've invested in the community and who want to build a life here are getting involved in public service, are trying to be a voice for this community. And so I commit myself to listening, to working with you, to being an advocate for the needs of the people that you represent. And I look forward to sharing in that very, very important work with you. So thank you so very much for having me tonight.
Thank you.
I have a question. You're running for District 114.
That's right. Our current representative Eric Fresen is term limit out.
Eric, which is this district that was Miami, part of the Shelly Park, part of Coral Gables.
That's right. A little bit of Pine Crest. It goes all the way down to the village of Cutler Bay.
And what end elections are in November, right?
The election is in November. There's a primary in August. I'm not sure if I'll have a primary opponent. I'm the Republican in the race.
Now, I heard your last name is Coriel.
Mi nombre es Coriel.
It's a nice name, I tell you. Coriel was, is a movie director, very famous with that name, Coriel.
Gonzalo Coriel.
See, you know about Gonzalo Coriel.
I know my history.
Oh, yeah? He's a very famous personality.
Absolutely.
Well, welcome. Thank you very much.
People are always, thank you so much. People are always a little confused.
When you start to put propaganda around.
I think you'll, I think if you start talking to folks, I'm walking door to door because I think that's the best way to communicate with people. And eventually, I think you'll see some signs, but first, it's a door-to-door introduction. So even on days when it's raining like today, you'll see us walking door to door.
Well, there you have a big, big, big man, this patron there with you. He's a strong guy.
That's right.
So you should put a lot of propaganda around the district.
We will.
Big, so.
All I ask Commissioner Suarez is when I knock on your door, if it's raining, please open the door, okay?
I will, I will.
Thank you all very much.
I wish you well. I wish you good luck, yes. Thank you very much.
You'll need to bring him cookies.
I will.
Just a.
I appreciate the intelligence.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we can move on to item five.
Item five, report of the city manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city commission, late this afternoon, I put together a brief report to update you on a couple of issues and matters. First and foremost, the Fourth of July celebration planning is coming along. We will be meeting with the mayor in the next week or so to discuss the actual program for the event. As of this afternoon, we have secured approximately $8,000 in either commitments or checks received from sponsors, which covers the cost of the fireworks. So we're expecting our corporate citizens to step up to the plate and continue to participate in this event. We will submit to you a detailed report at the next city commission meeting with the projection of the projected or expected expenses and any revenue via sponsorships that we have been able to secure. The next item in my report is obviously with the Memorial Day holiday coming up. The city has made plans to order a wreath, as customary, in form of an American flag honoring our fallen military heroes. And that flag will be displayed in front of City Hall, right under the flag poles. We do this every year and at least in observance of this memorable holiday. We are also preparing to send out a message, as customary, via the city website, Facebook page, honoring their service to our country. And we're also going to send a blast email. You will see, as soon as you look at your email, you will see an image of what Mr. Q prepared for the website, which honoring, on your behalf, honoring the fallen heroes as a result of the upcoming holiday. So the next, which takes me to the next item, we have an item, an unfunded mandate that we have been advised of involving one of our police department employees, actually our lieutenant, which deals with military service under the Florida Division of Retirement. And it is my duty to report to you on matters that are obviously over and above what I am authorized to spend or mitigate. It looks like we have a pending liability of $25,664 reflecting our contribution for military leave for Pete Delgado for a period of time that dates back to the '80s through 1991. Unfortunately, we found out about this liability on May 4 or May 6, May 4, I'm sorry, via notification that we received from the Division of Retirement. I briefly spoke to the mayor about this today and to our city attorney. And I will be giving the city attorney a complete package to include a chronological timeline schedule involving the, these periods of time that the Florida retirement system claims the city must comply with under a Florida statute that they have given us. So I'm not very optimistic that we will be able to get away or get away from having to pay this invoice because I've learned that this is obviously something that is a law that we must abide by. And because of the time involved here, they have assessed some penalties and they've always, they have also pointed us to the Florida statutes on this issue. Time is of the essence here, so I will be delivering to the city attorney a packet tomorrow with a memo detailing exactly the history behind this. We learned about this only because Lieutenant Delgado made an inquiry to the Florida retirement system. He made an inquiry because he was looking into buying service time for his military service to our country. The moment that he sent in a letter and a request for an audit so that he could buy or purchase the military time, it triggered an audit. And the audit finding reveals that the city owes him money for a period of time, like I said, from 1987 through 1991. And we have been noticed, we have been in conversations with the Florida retirement system. And again, we will have our city attorney get involved as soon as tomorrow and to see if there's a resolution to the problem. Otherwise, there's going to be a payment that's going to be due, that's probably going to be a little bit more than this amount that has been disclosed to you because the invoice will accrue or carry a 1% per month assessment on the amount left unpaid, and these are governed by Florida statutes. I pulled out the copy of the statute that we were pointed to by FRS, and we'll continue to keep you posted on this. I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
That should be something that the representative to be.
Involved with, absolutely.
Should be involved because it's really obnoxious.
It's punitive.
That a person that has dedicated a part of his life to the defense of this country be penalized just because there is a, as the manager was advised, there's no way that you're going to prevail. Is that correct?
I'm not very optimistic about it.
So this is, this is something which is out of sight.
Well, it's punitive to the city. The way the statute is, reads is very punitive to the city. The sad part here is that the city, the way it looks, the city will have to pay for his military time. And I have no problem paying the $4,800 because we need, we honor our military. But the fact that they didn't tell us and assess a fine 20 years or 25 years later in the amount of $20,000, it's extremely punitive, it's unfair, and we have never been noticed and it may have never been uncovered unless Lieutenant Delgado had made this inquiry or it could be a more serious situation come his retirement date years from now. This fine could be double what we're looking at today. So we will have conversations with the Florida retirement system. I will report back to you. And again, the matter may have to come to you for, so that you could give me approval to settle the matter because this is over and above my spending capacity. And so this is a serious issue for our city.
May I ask one quick question?
Yes, let's finish the, Ms. Attorney first.
By the way, I just want to say this. I mean, the City of West Miami, even during the darkest hours, had never, ever failed to pay the retirement system.
No, ever.
Ever. In addition, since that had been that long, it should be barred by something called the doctrine of latches. And that would be something to be discussed, not with an administrative or bureaucrat, but with a lawyer. So I will be very happy to just go ahead and intervene in that capacity.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Does that, does that $20,000 go to Lieutenant Delgado?
No, he'll never see a dime of the $20,000. I specifically spoke to Terry from the Florida retirement system. And the only thing that would be applied towards Pete's creditable military service time towards his retirement would be the $4,800, which, you know, if we were noticed properly, that could have been settled and we pay into the $4,800, honor his military service. But I find that extremely punitive when the city has never, ever been notified of this decision that's been taken by the Florida retirement system.
It's a fine to the city.
It's a fine to the city because he looked into purchasing military time out of his own pocket, out of pocket, and it triggered an audit. And all of a sudden, they found $4,800 that the city did not pay, not because he was an employee, mind you. He had resigned from the city as a dispatcher to enlist in the armed forces. And there's a window of time that is dictated by statute that, that makes it mandatory for the employer, whether he's hired or not. There's that window of time that we would have to pay in and honor his military time, whether he's hired or not. Very difficult.
I, Ms. Attorney, I have a question. Since this is coming under the manager's report, assumed as an emergency item, and, but it's not a item, do we need to make a motion or do we need a blessing?
No, I mean, I believe that all you need is a blessing. There's no item in the agenda. So the issue is that the manager is under the obligation of reporting because this is a daily fine. See, we just cannot wait.
Understood. Okay? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I have a question.
Yes.
Officer Villalobos, I told Yolanda, the manager, today, you should get involved in this. You should call there and you should try to see how this works, see if we can be in a better position because she's the manager, but you are the lawyer.
That's precisely what I said.
If this is a legal matter, I ask Yolanda, are you involved with Villalobos working on this? She said, no, has been very busy. Villalobos doesn't know yet. That was about 3:00 PM or 2:00.
That was yesterday. I met with Mr. Villalobos today and I was given the notice yesterday.
And then you told me, no, Villalobos doesn't know yet. So I hope Villalobos do something and call our, our, and.
I was told today.
Representatives in Tallahassee, our legislators.
Sure.
And after that is when we should get involved. Before that, I don't think a commission have to get involved in that. We have a prestigious lawyer here for that.
All I ask is.
That's my opinion.
All I ask is for the blessing and that's all.
But what I want to add, that Villalobos should get involved in this and work in this.
That's, that's what we approve.
For the record, Mr. Mayor, if I may, the city was noticed on, yesterday, Captain Avila, was it yesterday or the day before?
Actually, yeah, the day before.
The day before yesterday. I received the invoice yesterday and it was in my possession. I immediately called the Florida retirement system. The captain gave me this morning a packet, which is in my possession, that will be submitted to the city attorney with a cover memo as to what we have discussed here today, and we have not lost time. But I was not able to get to him yesterday. So I did brief him today when we met.
Thank you. Anything else in your report, Madam Manager?
Yes, sir. In my report, the next item in my report contains a grants update list. From time to time, our office keeps you, at least as a reminder, we provide you with a list of the grants applied for on behalf of the City of West Miami. As you know, the grants writer is Robert Ruano and his company is Echostrata, and he's doing an outstanding job trying, trying to pursue capital dollars so that we can continue to put projects out for the greater good of the community. At any, at any time, if you feel you want to discuss any of these projects with us, please bring it to our attention, but I felt it was important to keep you informed. You will see this report again as we prepare our budget projections because some of these grants are tied with matched dollars from our various funds. So we will prepare a more extensive report in the coming weeks as we start to work with budget projections. The next item in my report is I received a phone call from the District 6 Commissioner's Office Chief of Staff yesterday advising us that the city may have an opportunity to pursue annexation efforts again. And I was referred to the office of George Fernandez at Miami-Dade County. I left him a message yesterday and I had the opportunity to speak to him today. Mr. Fernandez, who heads up a portion of that annexation office, advises that there are six applications in the pipeline from other cities that are being processed that involve annexation efforts. As a refresher, I attached a color copy of the map, and it's in your possession this evening, of the annexation effort that the city went through probably back in 2012. And we, the Chief of Staff for Commissioner Sosa and I had a short conversation.
2012? That was in Carasa, in Mayor Carasa time. It was before 2010. I mean, 2012. We had in 16. 2012, that's four years ago.
That was the last one.
That was 20 years ago when we tried to make that.
Commissioner Suarez, let her finish.
I have.
Let's her finish the.
My archives have been stored away. I did not have time to pull down the actual box, so you may be correct, sir.
Do you remember, please?
There have been three failed annexation efforts. My job is to bring you this information so that you could give me some directions. The, the area in question would probably not require an election since the number of electors are less than the 250 that are required by Miami-Dade County for a, for an annexation process. I advise our county commissioner and her Chief of Staff that I felt I did not have the authority to proceed or resurrect any annexation efforts without commission approval. Currently, from what I understand, there are three applications for annexation from the City of North Miami that are in the pipeline. Biscayne Park has an annexation application, and Florida City. Miami Springs will be taking up the issue at their next commission meeting. During my conversation with Mr. Fernandez, he advised that the effort could be led in-house and the application process will probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of about $2,500. I yield to your direction on this matter, and I have been asked to report back to the district commissioner so that there's, at least from, from her office, she can get a sense of where the city is headed with this. So I'm bringing it to your attention as it was brought to mine.
I'll tell you my, my portion and then I want to hear from my colleague. The last annexation, well, as you mentioned, we have three already that have caused money to the city and we haven't been successful at it. The very last one left a very bad taste. Because we were not given the opportunity after we spent, I believe, around $20,000.
Correct.
And, I mean, the way it was treated was, in my opinion, very disrespectful. I mean, it was something that, we were not even given the opportunity to present. So I want to make sure that if, I know annexation, I mean, from previous conversations that we had, it's a good way to go, especially for the City of West Miami, but only if, and I know there's no guarantee, but because then there's many meetings and many things that we got to go through. But the bottom line is, I mean, by the way, this is the first time I hear about it. So how much time, you know, before I finish my statement, how much time do we need to respond?
I'm not prepared to.
Is there like a deadline or so on? Because I think this is something that.
No.
You know, we had to review, please, 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 please. We had to review.
We have to go through the process in its entirety, as these cities have.
But, but in other words, I think we need to discuss it among ourselves and, you know, kind of sleep on it and, and also, you know, we got to reach out to our residents. We have to, so those are my thoughts.
My job is to bring it to your attention so that I can receive my marching orders from you and.
Okay. Commissioner Suarez, I know you have.
Yeah, Yolanda, my job is, my job is to tell you what I think is the best for the city. And I talked, the last meeting, we, I talked about the annexation, we have been doing vertical because we could not do it horizontal to the west. And I expressed, you know, that I was, at that time, I was tired about the meetings. And, and I tell you, Yolanda, it is now 2012. You have to remember very well, Mayor Carasa was here, the mayor, in those events. You have to remember. You remember Mayor Carasa, right?
Yes.
Mayor Carasa was here in those 15, 15 years ago.
That was in 2000, around 2003, and then in 2000. There were three failed.
But the meetings, the meetings were not, you know, were Carasa, it was about 15 years ago or so.
Correct.
I want to be sure that, years ago, years ago. And then, like Mayor said, I don't recommend you any starting process. Let this commission, let us, you know, think about this. And because one thing is that I have a, I have a concern about this. Because as you explained here, and this happened the last time, less electors, less than 250. It could be done, not requiring an election. And the same condition was at that time. And was the opinion that there should be an election because the perception, and I agree, in this, in this time of the moment of the country and of the elections, I don't think, I don't, I don't agree to make an, an, an annexation without, that the people vote, express their opinion in that, in that area. The procession is going to be terrible, that the city is taking over a piece of land. We, as the City of West Miami, we should not do that in that way. That's my opinion now. And then, as the mayor said, let's think about this and we talk this later.
Mr. Mayor? Commissioner Blanes, yes?
Well, I, I think that we need to be clear, realistic, and, and consider what really happened there. Okay, we had this opportunity. We spent $20,000. We did all the legwork. I believe other cities were doing the same thing at the time.
Yes.
We were actually encouraged by Miami-Dade County Commission to do this. And we did everything that was demanded of us. And, you know, we did our study, our presentation, we had everything.
We had a good application.
All our ducks lined up, as, as they say, right? And basically what happened politically was that the Dade County Commission got some heat from the property owners of the commercial properties. And they said, look, you know, you do this and we're going to get people to run against you.
Correct.
We're going to form a pack and we're going to get you out.
Correct.
And basically, what happened?
They shut down all the applicants on that day.
The rug was pulled from under us and we lost $20,000. Other cities lost $20,000. And it was all political. It was purely all political. Okay? So now, what are they saying again? They're saying again that they're going to give us this opportunity again? And as soon as they feel the heat from the, from the commercial property owners, you know, the same thing's going to happen? I tell you, we have to be very weary about this. And, you know, I smell politics. That's, you know, dirty, rotten-down politics. That's what I smell.
Just to, Mr. Mayor, if I may, with your permission, sir, we're talking about when the last effort was, we ventured into the last annexation effort. We have a map that is in your possession that I see was generated by the county in June 2013. June 2013. So the 2012 date seems to me that it was our last effort to do, to proceed with annexation. I know that the mayor, Mayor Muina, and our city attorney, and I think some of you, you were there, Vice Mayor Candi Blanca, and I believe Captain Avila was here. I mean, all of us were present before the committee itself. So that was in 2012. Effort may have started late 2011, but our application, our last attempt to annex was in 2012. It's just that we have tried unsuccessfully on two occasions. And Commissioner Suarez may be correct about 2003 or 2005.
Let me tell you, you maybe said that this was done, this map in 13, it was a committee and was some kind of talk, but the meetings at the Kakawala and the meetings at the Palacio del Disco, and those meetings were before, years, years before this. When you come to FIU and we paid about $20,000, was years before this. This is just was maybe a map and maybe, you know, a talk, but this not was the real thing. The real thing was before and nothing. And this is just a drop of smoke in our eyes.
We got to keep the record straight, please. Commissioner Suarez, yes, I, we have gone, and I don't remember the dates, but we, as far as I remember, the annexation efforts have taken three times.
Yes.
The first time, the first time we, it was the corner of 57th and Corway. That, we were not in this commission, okay? The second time is the one that you referred to where Chatsworth and Boeing was higher and through FIU Metropolitan, whatever, and actually it was more than 20,000, okay? And the last time, it was around 212, and I was present. I went to that meeting. So that was about $20,000. At that time, we didn't hire Chatsworth and Boeing. We did a different procedure. We did a lot of stuff in-house in an effort to save money. And still, the last time, we were not even able to present. Their minds were made up by the time we got to the meeting. And not only our city, but every single city that went for annexation failed. So, so all I'm saying is, you know, we had bad experience with it. I personally, I'm not ready to give an answer yet. I need to sleep on it. We need to, and if this is one of those that came to us and now we had to make a decision tonight, I'm not ready to do that. So I don't know how.
I agree with you.
Okay. Commissioner Blanes?
We have to remember that, you know, this is very political. They're saying one thing today and tomorrow they'll say the other, just like it happened the last time. They encouraged us and we did all this legwork and we spent $20,000 and then we couldn't even present.
And by the mayor.
Because basically, you know, they got so much heat from the commercial property owners.
But please, please, no.
That they, no, that's it.
It's not open to the public, I'm sorry.
Mayor, may I?
Let me remind you that it's 8:10. We have many items, we're still in manager's report, and so let's move forward. I mean, we can discuss this later.
I want to add a very short comment.
Yes.
We already annexed in about 3,000 new residents or 3,500 residents with the buildings, there's controls against the city and do not cost the city. You have an idea, you're an architect. If we annex that area, they don't have sidewalks, they don't have sewer, they don't have, so you know how much it's going to cost the city annex that area? Because if we put that area in our, according with our ordinances, neither Juan Pena, who is now with the telephone in his hand, he cannot give you a figure. Because we have to do everything new, sidewalks, sewers, and everything. So I don't think that is going to be a liability for the city at this moment.
There's an old saying that says that before you take a step forward, your other foot needs to be firmly planted. And right now, we're not in that position. Right now, our endeavor is, our energies, our resources are being committed to something else. So, but I don't even think that, even if we were able to, I don't think the county is going to be able to deliver. I just, I have no confidence in them whatsoever.
Okay, I think we all say our point. Any additional comments before we go into that subject?
I have questions, but in the interest of time, Mr. Mayor, do you want me to hold them? I don't know if now's the proper time to ask the questions or?
I just don't want to, this is, this came on the manager's report. I just want to get, I just want to get a yes or no answer to, or we can defer this item. I'd rather defer the item and.
It's not an item, it's just a.
Like I said, it's not an item.
If we defer, might we lose the opportunity? That's one of my questions.
Okay, go ahead. I ask a question.
If we defer, might we lose the window of opportunity? I need to know that before I.
I'm not in a position to answer that.
This is not an agenda item.
We don't know. Okay, so.
There's no, 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 but let's, okay, let's keep the record straight. Ask the question, Madam Manager.
She answered it. She's not in a position to answer.
Not in, okay.
I don't know enough about when the window of time opens. I do know that there are applications in the pipeline and others to follow from other municipalities. I cannot tell you with any type of certainty whether there's a cutoff date, a deadline. I know that this has all come back to life or resurrected as a result of a recent report by a committee that was studying the issue of annexation again. And so this has come to the board and I guess district commissioners are notifying their cities and that's how I came to know about this. I left a message for Mr. Fernandez yesterday, whom I have worked with in the past, and I spoke to him very briefly today and I advised him, we had a commission meeting and I was basically going to come to the commission, advise you that the opportunity is there and that I could not commit until such time you gave me instructions on how to proceed, one way or the other.
Let's do the following. Can I suggest the following? Okay, in abundance and caution, let's put it as an item in the next meeting for discussion, okay? So we can air out all the questions, you know?
It'll give me time to bring the old applications and we can be certain as to the dates that we applied.
And let's move over to the items, yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Wait, 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 Commissioner Suarez?
I recommend you, Mayor, that the manager, if the mayor is saying, put in the agenda for next meeting or the other one, but that also means you should start the procedure and get involved accounting this. Because tonight, this is not even an agenda item for discussion.
I'm not, I'm not certain.
This is what the mayor said. It's a conversation, let us sleep on this and then we will see in the future.
Okay.
As a way.
Mr. Mayor, just one comment for the city manager. You mentioned something about a cutoff date.
I don't know.
Okay, well, if there's a cutoff date, then we have to even be more weary about it. Because why would there be a cutoff date? If this is being done for the good of the community and the quality of life of the residents here in Dade County, and they're saying, hey, take it or leave it, if you don't do it by such and such time, that's it, you're out of luck. That doesn't sound right. That doesn't sound altruistic. That doesn't sound like it's got the best interests of anybody in mind. So if that's the case, can you please find out?
Yes, sir, I will.
Why they have a cutoff date?
Okay.
I will, I'll bring more information back.
We need to move on. Anything else on the manager's report?
That's it, sir.
That's it. Okay, next item, please.
Item six, Report of the City Attorney.
There's two items to report tonight. The executive director of the Miami-Dade County Commission of Ethics send a notification to the city and to all the cities in Miami-Dade County requesting that an employee be appointed as their point person and their contact to the Commission of Ethics. Aneri Gonzalez and myself went out this morning and there were like 20 municipalities there. And there's going to be some sort of constant communication with the Commission of Ethics and the Commission of Ethics with the municipality through myself and Aneri Gonzalez.
Thank you. The second item, go ahead.
And it was our recommendation to appoint Aneri because Aneri deals with, obviously, financial disclosures and it's fitting to the position that she holds with the city. So after discussion with the city attorney, it was done yesterday via a request from the Commission on Ethics. So she will be the point of contact in terms of bringing that office and the elected leadership and seminars and information. She will be, her office will be distributing that to the commission and reporting from time to time.
Thank you. Congratulations.
I thought that's the way it was.
Thank you.
So.
The second item is that.
Mr. Elliott, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just.
Yes, I.
We noticed that.
So.
I'm out of order.
Yeah, you're out of order.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, at the meeting held on the 4/20 at 4:06 in the morning, you all considered, no, I'm sorry, 3:46 in the morning, you all considered my reappointment for my position. And the appointment that was made, the decision that was made at my request is inconsistent with Section 4.06. The city manager, city attorney and city engineer were says that such appointment shall not be for a period beyond the next regularly scheduled city council election. So it cannot be for five years, it has to be for two years.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm in agreement. Are we in agreement?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Actually, Mr. Mayor.
There was an item on the agenda for that.
Okay, anything else on your report?
Yes, well, I have, I was instructed to just go ahead and come and report on Jennings and Bird Harry.
No, no, that's not.
Those are agenda items.
Okay. As a matter of fact, that was an agenda item. So do we need to, Madam Clerk, do we need to read the item onto the record since it became part of the attorney's report?
If you would like to take out of order that item, we'll read it for the record and then you proceed for discussion. Would you like to take that item out of order?
Yes, please.
Item 10B, under Unfinished Business, request for clarification by Commissioner Blanes as to the following Jennings law and the Bird Harry's Private Property Rights Protection Act.
Well, this is my item and I'm going to speak on it.
Go ahead.
At that particular meeting, something happened that I thought would never happen. And consequently, in hindsight, now I realize that I could have voted and I didn't get to vote. I was elected to this position by the residents of the City of West Miami and I take this matter very seriously. I swore an oath to uphold all the laws, all the regulations and the charter of this city. And one of the most important responsibilities that we have is to vote. And that night, I couldn't vote. You know, my colleagues, you all, were hell to the heat and I wanted to stand together and vote and I couldn't vote. And as I'd done a little research and I spoken to colleagues and, you know, I come to realize that I could have voted. If I, I publicly actually stated that I had spoken to such and such, and as soon as you do that, you have the right to vote. Because it's done every day in every single city here in Dade County, just about. I think what happened was very, very sad, very, very, you know, personally, I think it was despicable that, you know, it happened. So with that said, I had a couple of conversations with the, Mr. Centorino, he's the guy that heads the Ethics Board, and he basically told me, his only admonition as far as voting on a matter that pertains, that the Jennings law could pertain, like for instance, what we were voting on that night, the, those two projects, real estate projects. He said, the only admonition was that, he said, look, don't speak to 100 people. Because if you speak to 100 people, you're going to have to keep 100 names and 100 times and places and then you're going to have to declare each one of them. So, you know, if you talk to someone or a couple of people before you vote, all you have to do publicly is announce it and you have the right to vote. And, you know, that didn't happen the other night. Some cities actually don't even have a resolution like we have here, which I didn't ask for. But some cities do. They have a resolution saying that they're opting out of Jennings and as long as they proclaim publicly that they did have a conversation with someone in regards to this, you know, to the item, they can legally, lawfully vote. I believe the City of Doral, that's what they do.
Doral doesn't have any legislation.
They don't have any legislation and they lawfully, you know, their commissioners and their mayor publicly proclaim, look, I spoke to such and such and that's it. As long as you say it publicly, you can go ahead and vote. I don't know how you all feel about it. There is a resolution here to do just that. I don't know if we have to do it or not. I don't think we need to do it, but, you know, as long as it's here, maybe we should. You know, it just makes it a little bit more, gives it more clarity. But once again, you know, the Jennings law has been a big mystery. Yes, you can, no, you can't. Well, guess what? Yes, you can. As long as you proclaim it publicly, that you spoke to such and such and such and such date, then you can vote. And I got this information from Mr. Centorino. He heads the Ethics Board. He's the one that makes sure that we don't do anything that's unlawful or unethical. I don't think there is any other city in Dade County that does not do that. So, you know, we need to be practical and we need to be reasonable. The other, the Bird Harris Act, there is a, there was a, in that, I want to pass this to you all. I don't know if you all saw this.
Does the city attorney has a copy of that?
I don't know.
He needs to have a copy.
Basically, what, well, this was something that was supposed to be included in our packet, which is a, which is basically a.
There's my copy. I don't have a copy. There's an extra, there's an extra copy, pass it to the city attorney, please.
Where is a legal opinion of what can happen, okay? If we were to create a moratorium or we were unreasonably denied the.
Commissioner, could we get you to speak into, just for the purpose of the record?
I just, I don't know what happened to my copy. Basically, it is, it is something that you obtained for us that was not in the package of the meeting on the 20th, last month, on the 20th. And it was a legal opinion that was crafted by someone from the League of Cities, some attorneys, right, that were retained by the League of Cities.
Yes.
And it explains in detail what can happen, putting us in a position of liability.
Right.
And that wasn't in our packet. I don't, I don't understand how that was not in our packet.
If I may, just for the clarity of clarification, the legal opinion was not, the attorney, Jeff Hockman, was retained by the City of West Miami after consultation with our insurance carrier being the Florida League of Cities.
With more reason than it should have been in our packet. We spent money, you know, and have this guy draft up this legal opinion, which is supposed to inform us.
Absolutely.
On how we should make our decision and it wasn't even in our packet. Why wasn't it in our packet, Madam Manager?
Sir, I don't prepare the agenda, but it was published, it was intended to be in the packet. I, I'm almost certain that it was made part of a packet.
I think this is a good, okay, this is a good time for me to ask that question. And I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to ask the city attorney.
That was not provided as part of the packet.
Mr. Mayor, can you let me finish with my presentation?
Right, but let me forewarn you about, let me forewarn you about something, okay? There's always the proper time, I'm not saying to do something legal or illegal, okay? I'm going to use this word precisely for the particular reason. Everything is about timing, everything is about information, okay? And I'm a true believer that I'm, we're not here to alert the public how they can come back to us. So, you know, we, I think we need. So, you know, we, I think we need to, and, you know, and going back, and then I'm gonna go back to, to, to the conversation that you had with Mr. Centorino, because I have a different opinion on that. But what happened is the following. And I'm gonna say in lemon turn. Basically, you don't give bullets to, to the opponent to, to shut us down. So that's basically what, what this is doing. So, but I remember that night, those questions were asked, and I believe Commissioner Rodriguez asked particular questions in that, and, and, and we were, at that time, we were all informed of, of this, and, and, and we.
I beg, I beg to defer. I, I, it's in living color and it's on the record. I remember Commissioner Rodriguez asking that questions, and what she got was silence.
No, I, I don't, I don't, I don't think so.
It was like a big mystery.
Wait, okay.
It was like a big mystery. It was like, wow, what do we do?
Commissioner, I, I, I defer. You know, it, it would have been, you know.
Mr. Mayor.
When you have, when you have, we're not here to analyze the past. I, I, I know what you want to do. You want to, you don't want to make the same mistakes, i- if you want to call it that, that we did in the past and the future, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, but even that night, I mean, it's human nature, it's human nature. You know, when something happens, when an accident happens, you know, and they ask a lot of witness, everybody gives sort of a different opinion. So, so it's your perception, my perception, her perception, you know, you know, I'm, I remember the question very clear, and I remember a clear answer. That's what I remember. And, and, because I asked the question, I, I, all my decisions are based on information. And, and, and talking about that, one thing that I always remember, I ask the same question to Joe Centorino when I go to the ethic meetings, and he laughs, because I always ask the question. And the question is, if I ask our legal counsel for an opinion, and he gives, gives me an opinion, even if he's wrong, we are protected, okay? So what I'm, what I'm saying is, you know, it's, it's all about interpretation, you know, so I, I would like for perhaps, this is a good time for our city attorney to.
Well, I'm, I'm not done.
Well, okay, no, no, you, you let me know then.
I want to finish, because this is my item.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine, but.
Well, you know, you talk about protection, you know, that night I didn't feel protected, and the residents of the city of West Miami were not protected. The integrity and the sovereignty of this commission wasn't. Now, I'm not trying to judge, I'm not trying to blame anybody, I'm not, you know what? I, I think that we need to do what is practical, what is reasonable. We're all of moral character, we're integral people, we are not out to find gaff and do something that is wrong. We're not here to, to see how we can line our pockets, you know, we're not, we're not, we're here to serve our community and to create the best possible quality of life for all the residents of West Miami. And you know what? And, and you have to vote to do that. And you know, I didn't get to vote the other night, and I don't want this thing to happen again. And basically, we need to be practical, we need to be reasonable, you know, all the other cities do this. It would, would be a laughing stock if we don't do it. I mean, really, think about it. You, you know, you, okay, you, we're not gonna go out and, and, and talk to everybody and their grandmother, we're not gonna do that. But if it just so happens that you happen to hear something, or somebody says or mentions something, or you were nearby, and then they, they stand here like they did the other night, and they said, well, he had a conversation, he said something, you know, that night I spoke about a thousand things, and maybe that project was mentioned once, and because of that, I couldn't vote?
Commissioner.
It's ridiculous. You had another, you had another, wait, Commissioner Swar, you had another attorney that stood here and said, you could have voted. And, and, and in hindsight, I have learned.
He's not our attorney. He, he's not.
Yeah, but when our, when our city attorney is not representing, you know, the best interest for this.
No, 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 let me, let me, let me stop you. No, no, Commissioner, let me stop you right there. This is not, no, no, let me stop you right there. No, 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 no.
Mayor, I have a question.
I, I truly believe our city attorney always has the, the city's interest.
You know, there's a saying, there's a saying that says, if it looks like a duck and it walks like a duck, then it's gotta be a duck.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, go ahead, Doc, Commissioner Swar.
Commissioner Blanes, can I know your item, please? As a quick question. You, three times, you repeat the same thing about this. Why we don't have what other cities has and we don't have? So what other cities have, and what is what you want to do here? Well, what is your presentation to what other cities have that we don't, and which is your opinion, your, your recommendation? What is your, your remedy?
Well.
Do you, you have a remedy for this?
It's, to use common sense and to use reason.
But you haven't written, you, you have a.
Like I say, some cities have legislation, some don't.
May I explain?
And as long as you, and as long as you proclaim publicly.
Okay.
That you did have a conversation with such and such about the project that you're gonna vote on, as long as you say it publicly, you can vote, and it's lawful, and it's ethical, and it's done here in this county every day. I had two conversations with Mr. Centorino. His only admonition again was not to go out and talk to 100 people.
Let's finish.
Because then if you talk to 100 people, then you're gonna have to stand here and mention 100 names and 100 times and places, and that's not practical.
Commissioner Blan, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I understand you, but I don't want you get involved in the same idea, and I don't see the.
I don't want to sound like a broken record, do you?
No, 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 no. If you see another, I, I understand that you, what you want to say is other cities have ordinance and we don't have it. Is that what you mean?
No. I said that some cities have an ordinance and some don't, but both, having it and not having it, they exercise common sense and practicality and reason.
And what you want, do you want that our city have an ordinance, like other cities?
If, if not all other cities have the ordinance, it's, it's by choice, it's by our, you know, what we decide we want to do. It's here already, and it's gonna have a first reading. So, you know, I, I just don't want to be in this position.
But we're not discussing the item as a separate item right now.
Or any of you.
Okay.
And, and, and here, I had something else to pass, if you can pass. I, I did a little bit of research on the internet, and I found the Burt Harris, no, no, it's, pass it, pass it, keep on it, pass it. And I just, there was 14 pages, but in the, in the first three pages of the Burt Harris.
I'm not keeping a page, I'll pass my page to, to the city attorney.
It, it, it explains exactly the position that we would have put ourselves in, in those first three pages. If we would have created a moratorium, or if we would have voted to deny one of those projects, black and white. So, okay, I'm done.
Okay, Mr. Attorney.
Okay. First of all, I'm going to make a statement, and I'm gonna read what other city attorneys have said in Miami Dade County, okay? First of all, I'm gonna read from Mr. Centorino's communication with other people. This was referred to Mr. Alex Diaz, member of Community Council 11 and so on and so forth. I inform that Mr. Diaz wants to adhere to the original ru, I'm sorry. Mr. Diaz anticipates for the purpose of the meeting with a discussed attendance on the issue. I inform Mr. Diaz to adhere to the original rules of Jennings versus Dade County 589, Southern Second, 1337, Florida 30CA 1991, which prohibits public board members sitting in quasi-jurisdiction proceeding from engaging in private discussion regarding a pending issue outside of the public hearing on the matter, and that violates the rule created by the presumption of prejudice that could lead to an overturning of a decision in wake of the Jennings violation. Consequently, I advise Mr. Diaz not to participate in the requested meeting, and that signed by Joseph Centorino. Mr. Centorino's predecessor, Robert Myers, wrote in another piece, it says, if this is the case, then I recommend that you should recuse yourself in a similar situation. Now, I'm going to read what Jennings states. Ex parte communications are inherently improper and anathema to quasi-jurisdiction proceedings. Quasi-jurisdictional officers should avoid such contacts where they are identifiable. We hold that the allegation of prejudice resulted from ex parte contact with the decision-makers in a quasi-jurisdiction proceeding states a course of action. In other words, we would be responsible. Now, this decision was not made by Pepe Villalobos. This decision was made by three justices, Justice Bardell, Nesbit and Ferguson. Who's Mr. Bardell? Judge Bardell is the dean of the appellate judges in Florida, having served longer than any other justice in Florida, recognized by many accomplishments by designating the courtroom which the Third District Court of Appeal now sits. He was appointed to the Third District Court in 1961, admitted to the Supreme Court of the United States and the 50 Court of Appeals. He was appointed to the Third District in 1961. He was reappointed 1978, '84 and '90 as the chairman of the Florida Conference of District Court of Appeal Judges, one, the only person appointed to each of the three Constitutional Revision Commission, having been nominated to the Florida Supreme Court to the Constitutional Revision Committee in 1967 to 1968. In other words, this was one of the justices that wrote Jennings. Now, the other justice is Justice Nesbit, which is the one that actually wrote it. Justice Nesbit served in the Circuit Court of 11 Judicial Circuit. He was appointed to the Third District Judicial Circuit Court of Appeal in 1979. He represented the District Court of Appeal in various committees, president of the Florida Conference of District Court of Appeal Judges. And lastly, Judge Wilkie Ferguson, enrolled at Harvard University Law School. He was the editor and barr, of the barrister and received his Juris Doctor degree in 1968. Judge Ferguson was appointed to the Third District Court of Appeals in 1980, and he, and he was appointed then to the bench of the Federal Court in 1993. Now, in addition to this, there's a case by the name of Palmer Trinity Private School versus Village of Palmetto Bay that was heard by no less and no more than Judge Lawrence King. Now, who is Lawrence King? The senior United States federal court, the United States District Court of Southern District of Florida, and one of the longest-serving federal justices in the United States of America. He was secret court judge for 11 Judicial Circuit since 1965, and one of the courthouses, federal courthouses in name after him. Now, what did Justice King say about ex parte communication with people, notwithstanding whether or not everybody else has done, which by the way, they don't? Constitutionally, the village ordinance that was the opting out of Jennings, giving village official authority to engage in ex parte communication with anyone regarding merits of the upcoming quasi-jurisdiction hearings, created a scheme that was directly contrary to the framework laid out in the state court proceeding governing constitutional of ex, on constitutionality of ex parte communications. In other words, I didn't make this up, Commissioners and Mr. Mayor. This was done by justices sitting not only in federal court, but also in state court. Now, let me read you what other cities have said. Attorney George, I can't pronounce this name, Tredeki, he stated, "I do not believe the statutory process of that law," which I'm about to read, "is constitutional." Joni Armstrong Toffey wrote, "The Third District Court of Appeal has barred ex parte communication with Dade County Commissioners or all the quasi-jurisdictional board members on matters that would be resolved quasi-jurisdiction." Robert Ginsburg, "Ex parte communication include, written and oral, and are barred." These are writings by other city attorneys. The so-called Jennings rule stands for the proposition that elected officials may not discuss zoning matters outside of the public hearing. Why is this? If we're talking about transparency, people should be present when everybody or anybody talks to any of the persons that have, may have an interest in that case. Number one, you all sit and are elected by the people in two categories. You are sitting as legislators making laws, or quasi-jurisdictional officers as a separate matter, quasi-jurisdictional officer to hear appeals about the law. What is not understood is that your duty as a legislator is just to enact ordinances. You had enacted ordinance, when I say you, I don't mean you personally, but other commissioners had enacted ordinances that I have recommended not to enact, like tonight, I brought to you an ordinance because I was asked by the city clerk on behalf of Commissioner Blanes. I drafted that ordinance, but I am warning you that you do whatever you want, like what happened when the first red light camera. I recommended that that first red light camera ordinance was invalid, and in fact was invalid, validated by the Supreme Court of the State of Florida, which cost us money, when we had to give back money that we had collected. So if I make a recommendation, I made the recommendation for your best interest, not because I want to, or because I will to, because I have done the research. Because you see, Mr. Commissioner, there's a rule called the Rule of Completeness. You cannot read just a paragraph or a statute and say, this is the law. You have to read the whole thing. You see, as a matter of fact. Chapter 286.0115, read as follows. Access to local public officials, quasi-jurisdiction proceedings on local government matters. A county or municipality may adopt ordinances or resolution removing the presumption of prejudice from ex parte communication. Now, what is the presumption of, of prejudice? A presumption is just an idea that I might have in my head that something might be wrong. But there are two parts of a zoning issue, which is number one, the perception of impropriety that might, this chapter might eliminate, and the other one is due process. A person that is before your commission has the right to hear every single word that is uttered between a commissioner and a citizen, or a commissioner or an applicant. The matter, the, the fact that I have the right, because I was elected by the people, you were elected by the people because you were elected to make laws and to sit as a quasi-jurisdictional officer. You have one hat as a judicial officer, and you have one hat as a legislator. When you act as a legislator, you can speak to anybody that you want to. When you act as a quasi-jurisdictional officer, you act like a judge, and notwithstanding whatever anybody does, or what other city does, my duty is to advise you of what I think is right. And what I'm telling you, and you do whatever you want, and I did that, I wrote that ordinance because I was asked to write the ordinance, I'm telling you that I consider that ordinance a time bomb, because one day, it will come out to haunt you, and it will be, every single action that you have taken will be void up in issue. This is. This is why you cannot read one particular law and believe that you have the power of the entire body of law. Do you have a question?
Thank you.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, how many responses did you get from cities in De County that either have an ordinance in that fashion, as the attorney just stated? And how many responses did you get?
The responses I got from the Miami De County City Clerks, you have it in your pack, those are the responses I had.
But can you, North Bay Village?
You have, let me respond to that because I have it right in front of me. City of Doral does not have an ordinance. In other words, City of Doral is just out there in space. There's nothing that protects them.
How many cities? If you have the list of cities, can you please read them out?
Nine. City of Miami Garden has not adopted an ordinance. City of Homestead has adopted an ordinance. City of Miami Shore has adopted an ordinance. North Miami Bay Village has adopted an ordinance. Bay Harbor has not adopted an ordinance on advice of counsel. Surfside has adopted an ordinance. Almeido Bay not adopted an ordinance, very dangerous to the city and exposures to the city. So, what I'm telling you is this...
And the City of Miami also has...
The City of Miami also has it, and I'm going to, let me tell you, Mr. Commissioner, I don't care.
Now, listen, you stated...
Let me finish, let me finish.
Okay.
If everybody in Miami De County had an ordinance, which I in my heart believe, after my research, that is unconstitutional, I will tell you, like I did when you all passed the red light cameras originally, that the vendor came out to us and said, "I guarantee that this is constitutional." And I asked him precisely, "If you think that it's constitutional, hold those harmless." And he refused to. And I advised the commission not to do it, and yet you did it anyway. Fine, you have the right to do that. But the thing is that my perception is this, my obligation is advise you that you might do wrong. And although you might think that I'm against you personally...
No, I don't think that.
I'm telling you...
I think there's a big...
One more time, let's keep the record straight.
I think there's a misunderstanding here.
No, no, wait, wait.
Whatever you think, my job is to protect you personally and every single member of this community, of this council, and the City of West Miami. And I tell you that if you had done research, I spent two weeks doing twice as much as research, and I assure you that in my forty years of litigation and being in court every day, I assure you that I have the ability to do a lot of research.
Mr. Attorney, do you consider Joseph Santorino a good attorney? Sir?
I'll tell you why. I would ask, wonderful attorney, and I would ask Mr. Joseph Santorino to come in here and refuse you, sir.
Because you know what, I've had a conversation, not, not one, two conversations with him, and I asked him point-blank, "Mr. Santorino, can we do this?" His answer was, "Yes." I asked him, "Is it lawful?" He said, "Yes." "Is it unethical?" He said, "No."
Mr. Santorino wrote me a letter.
We have...
Wait, wait, wait. Stop, right there, stop right there. You want, both of you, stop. Listen, you asked for clarification, we got to follow the proper order, okay? Remember, Commissioner Blanis, you are one member in this table. This item is coming for clarification, not for rebuttal, okay? This item, you say your part, the attorney says his part, and that's it. We're not going to make a motion, we're not going to make a decision on this item, okay? If you feel that this item is strong enough to, that we all need to vote on it, then it needs to come back to us, okay? As an item on the agenda to be discussed and follow the proper order and the proper procedure. Unfortunately, we, like, and this is something that Commissioner Suarez told you, you know, and he wanted an answer. What's your position? You stay your position. What do you want? What do you want to propose? If you want to propose something, okay, you have the right to propose it, okay? And then, we all listen to it, we all vote it, this is a democracy. We, you know, and then, we move forward. You know, that's, I don't want to go into a rebuttal, and I don't want to, you know...
I think we're comparing apples and oranges here. I'm trying to keep this as simple, as practical, as reasonable as possible, and Mr. Attorney there is really convoluted it with all this legal mumbo jumbo, okay? And, you know, I am for the record...
It is clear to me.
For the record, I had two conversations with Joseph Santorino. He's the guy that...
Okay.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Now, wait, I'm not done, Mr. Attorney. I'm speaking, I'm not done. Look, you're comparing apples and oranges. You mentioned Commissioner Diaz about meeting, having a meeting with developers, having a meeting with planners, and of course, Mr. Santorino wrote him a decision or an opinion that said, "You should not do that." I'm not talking about us sitting down with planners, sitting down with investors that want to invest in the City of West Miami, or doing anything of that like manner. We are not going to sit with people that are going to plan projects. That's not my intention at all whatsoever. I'm not going to do that. I'm not doing this so I can go out and talk to people. I'm not going to do any of it. What I don't want to happen is, if I'm at a gas station pumping gas, and a resident that might be against the project walks over to me and says, "Hey, by the way, I don't like that building." And I happen to respond with him in some kind of way, then, even if he says that, it's his word against my word, and he comes here and he stands publicly here like it was done at the last commission meeting, and says, "You know what, I had a conversation with him, and you know what, he discussed the project and he can't vote." That's what I don't want it to happen.
I understood.
You know, I'm not saying that we're going to sit down with the planners, with the city manager, with the, you know, with the Public Works Director, and we're going to plan, and we're going to be in cahoots with whatever is going to happen here. I'm not saying that. All I'm saying is that if we happen to hear, if we happen to be near a conversation where we need to be, if we happen to be nearby, and somebody comes here and does the same thing that they did, which is a very sad thing that they did, I don't want that to happen again. And you know what?
Understood.
Exactly. We're all people of high morals here, and we have high values...
That's not in question here tonight.
And we have integrity, and you know, we're not looking out to find a way, you know, to better ourselves in any way, shape, or form. All we want is what is better for the residents of West Miami. And I'm just trying to protect our integrity here, our sovereignty, because you could have the same thing happen again. I don't want that to happen again. That's all, that is all.
Very simple.
Very simple, yes.
Very simple. Before you speak, Mr. Attorney, before you speak, because I don't want to get into... Let me say something. I have sat in this table for many, many, many years, okay? I sat, and you heard this story many times, but I'm going to say it again. For fourteen years, I sat here in the Planning and Zoning Board. I went from an alternate member all the way to the chair. Since 2000, I resigned from that board to become a commissioner in 2002. And I've been sitting here since. I started as a commissioner, now I'm the mayor, okay? I have been approached, I don't know, hundreds of times. And the way I always done it is very simple, very simple. When I was in the Planning and Zoning Board, somebody will call me, and I will say, I will get a phone call, I say, "I will get a phone call," very simple. And I will get this phone call, "My name is such and such, and I have an item tonight." I said, "Let me stop you right there." "What was your name again, sir?" "Okay, I have two choices. I can listen to you today, right now, but I will have to excuse myself tonight. Or, you stop right there, and you will have the benefit of my vote, one way or the other." And that's the way I have always conducted business. Now, furthermore, the same way you have neighbors, we all, this is a very tiny city. You know, we have neighbors. I have neighbors that come to me, and this is very typical. "I can't believe that you're my neighbor, and I was in the corner talking to such and such in the gas station, and I found out that we're going to have this item." I said, "I stop you right there." "How come you haven't told me about it? You're my neighbor. I know you for thirty years." Very simple. The law doesn't allow me to talk to you about this item, but you have the luxury of find out for yourself what this item is all about. You can consult with the manager, you can consult with whoever. You have the liberty to do that, educate yourself, so, you know, so you don't hear opinions from different people. That's all I say. And it has worked for me, and I've never gotten in trouble, okay? We all knew, we all mean well, and we sit in this board. And I understand your frustration, because you're very passionate, and you, Commissioner, I have no doubt in my mind about your character, about your personality, you have always done the best. And sometimes, you don't think with your head, you think with your heart. I guess most of the time, you think with your heart, because you really have your heart on this. You really, you love this...
That's a good thing.
I, I'm not saying it's a bad thing, but the laws are there for a reason. And I'll give you an example that has nothing to do with the law. Let's say you have a dress code in the office, and the boss, one day decides to come to the office without a suit, or actually, without a tie, just a tie, okay? Then, the next day, the next guy is going to come without a jacket. And before you know, you're going to have people with flip-flops in the office, because that's human nature. So, I know your intentions are not to talk to the developer and to do this and to et cetera, but you know what? The laws are not there for you. The laws are there for everybody, because you, with your integrity, you're not going to do that. But somebody in this board in the future might do. We might not be as lucky in the future of having the people that sit in this board. You know, we might have somebody that might want to use this, and, you know, and thank God we don't have that law, so now I can go out and talk to whoever, okay? So, those laws are there for a reason. This city is a very conservative city. This city, we have built what we have here based on the foundation of the people that came before us. And we have learned from the people that have made mistakes, and we don't want to make mistakes going forward. And so far, I have paid attention to our legal council, which I have a lot of respect for, and everything is fine. Yes, it is frustrating when there's people out there saying plain lies that we know that's not the truth. It takes a lot to hold back. But you know what? The truth will prevail. The truth will prevail. So, yes.
May I ask you a question? Is this deciding is for the first reading, right?
No, this is not even a reading. This is just a clarification, this is a clarification.
May we go ahead?
We have an item.
This is the first reading.
We haven't read the item.
No.
No. This was just a clarification, and what I'm suggesting is, if, after we go, you know, if this is, because we're talking about two different things, you know? We're talking about Jennings, and we're talking about, you know, the Burt Harris Act. I don't think that's the issue here. We're talking about the Jennings. So, what we can do is, all we can do is read the item into the agenda, first reading, there's no discussion.
Wait, let me respond to something.
Mr. Attorney, go ahead.
Dear Jose, I think part of Commissioner Blanis' confusion stemmed from the unfamiliarity with Section 286.0115, one Florida statute. Okay? I think, sir, that the best thing is for you and I, okay, to sit down with Mr. Santorino, if you want to, and clear this out. Because all you had to do was pick up the phone and call me and say, "I have this doubt," and you chose not to do it, okay? What I'm telling you is this, this item will come to the table. And when it comes to the table, you see, many lawyers that sit in my position are simply afraid of the commissions, and they will not tell you what they think in their heart because they are afraid of you. And I am not. I will tell you exactly what I think it ought to be, and I might be wrong. But if you follow my advice, you will not commit a mistake. It will be my mistake. So, what I'm telling you is this, if this item is passed, every time that it comes out to the table, I will tell you the same thing. Don't ask me if you don't want to hear the answer, because the answer is going to be, in my book, like Judge King, the mumbo jumbo, okay, of Judge King, is going to tell you that might be considered unconstitutional. And this is what I'm going to repeat time and time again. It is my belief, and you may do whatever you want, you may pass the ordinance if you want to. That's your prerogative.
We're not there yet.
Okay.
Thank you. Can you please read the item into the agenda, so we can move forward?
So, Mr. Mayor, you want me to read the first reading of the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, so, we're taking item 11. E, out of order. Item 11E, first reading. An ordinance of the mayor and the city commission of the City of West Miami establishing a procedure for quasi judicial proceedings. Ex parte communications, site visits, expert opinions, and review of mail and other communications by city officials in quasi judicial matters and applicants and other interested parties. Provide for severability, provide for codification, and provide for effective date, mayor and city commission.
Thank you.
And this item is sponsored by Commissioner Blanis.
Okay. First reading, no discussion on the item, I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
I have a, first and a second. Can you call the vote, please?
Yes. Commissioner Rodriguez, how do you vote?
I need to be sure before I vote. This is going to create an ordinance?
No, it's a first reading.
Right, right, no, no, I understand, I understand. But this is, would be the beginning of a creation of an ordinance. Is that correct?
No.
Mr. Attorney? Is this the, is this the beginning of the creation of the ordinance?
This is the application of so-called opt-out of Jennings.
To opt out of Jennings?
This is, this is the...
Application to opt out?
This is the ordinance that I was instructed to draft, notwithstanding my opinion, opting out of Jennings.
My vote is no.
Affording you the opportunity to speak to anybody, and then advising to the world that you have done so.
Mr. Mayor, based on, I believe in solidarity, Commissioner Blanis, I do, you know, I'm big on solidarity, but my vote is going to be...
We should be discussing this at the next reading.
I have to vote. My vote, my vote is based on my guidance of council, so my vote is no.
I'm sorry, I lost track, so that was your...
Is it motion and a second?
A second, motion and a second, and you have only called one?
Vote, Commissioner Rodriguez, no. Commissioner Vice Mayor Blanca.
No.
Commissioner Suarez.
Who do you call? Vice Mayor Blanca, okay.
Vice Mayor Blanca.
Okay.
Commissioner Suarez.
Yes, first reading, yes.
Commissioner Blanis.
Yes.
Mayor Mujina.
May I suggest, Mr. Mayor, may I suggest?
Yes.
I think that that ought to be open to the public. I think that it should go and vote yes in order to go to the world and to be aired in the world, because we don't want, we want transparency. So, respectfully, Commissioner...
We just aired it.
Commissioner...
We need the mayor's vote.
Mr. Attorney, I don't think we can persuade people to vote otherwise. So, we have two votes on the table, I will, for the spirit of, listen to it, my vote is yes.
Yes. Three, two, item passes. First reading and the... First reading and the second reading and public hearing of this ordinance will be advertised for June 15, 2016, at 7:30 PM.
And let me explain my-
Yes.
Why I said that this should go out to a full-fledged hearing. I think that that will air out any misconception of failure to be transparent. I think that if you vote to a public hearing, people will have time to, and the opportunity. You may have the same opinion. So I think that it should go to a full-fledged hearing, notwithstanding my opinion.
Okay.
I mentioned that I sat on this board for many, many years, but I had never been in this situation before. So, the vote was called?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Are you suggesting to change the vote? I mean, anyway, he passes.
Three, yes, no.
Anyway, he passed.
Yeah, pass.
So, so they are, okay.
The city will proceed to, for, to place the legal ad for the notice of public hearing, and that will come back to you as a second reading on June 15.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
The suggestion of the attorney, Bill Lewis, that Commissioner Blanes, you go to, that's your suggestion, get together with Centorino?
I'm sorry?
You make a suggestion for you, Commissioner Blanes, and mayor, go to, make a meeting with Centorino, and put together your ideas, that you make a suggestion?
Let me tell you this.
You did it?
Let me, let me tell you this. It's unfortunate that we had to put Mr. Centorino.
Well, I just asked if you did that suggestion.
Let me, I did that suggestion, yes.
But the thing is this. Mr. Centorino is not here to be the arbiter, or to be the referee of two opposing opinions, and that is not his job.
Distinguished counsel, I know, I only question if that idea that you had, that get together with Commissioner Blanes and see, because Centorino is the middle point in this point.
If Mr. Centorino wants to-
Your suggestion is valid, and you think you should call him, try to make a meeting, meeting of the minds. That's my question. If this is a valid suggestion, and it's going to be done or not? That's it, that's it.
The answer is this. The answer is this. This will be the ideal, but we're placing Mr. Centorino in a very awkward position, because he's not an arbiter.
Mr. Bill, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I don't say anything. I just tried to repeat what I heard from you, if that was going to happen.
It was your idea?
Period.
It was my idea between you and I, to just go ahead and talk to him. You mentioned him, it was your idea, all three of us. Sure, go ahead. I don't, I don't mind, if he wants to. It was your idea.
Commissioner Blanes, will you contemplate that? Wait, wait. Will you contemplate that idea?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, I think that will resolve everything. So, why not?
Look, I know what the man said to me.
Okay, no, 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 listen, that's it. It's a good idea. Now let's move forward. That's it, okay. Let's move forward. Next item. Let's go back to the order of the agenda. Okay? And then we're gonna take one by one till we finish tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, so next item.
I need to take a number one break.
Okay. Okay, let's stay, let's stay-
You had excuse.
Okay, let's all take a five-minute break.
... Like.
Step one.
I don't know.
I hope you have.
I know, I'm having a problem already.
Uh, Mrs. Dia Padron, can you get our city attorney to come back over here?
Take your whole, take your whole commission out like that.
Okay, request withdrawn. Are we ready, Mr. Mayor?
We waiting for the city attorney.
Okay.
Do we need him?
I'll tell you, i- 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 if he's right, there's a lot of gutless attorneys. In this town.
Okay, we're, we're back in session, so, Madam Clerk, uh, what's the next item, please?
Next item would be item seven, report of the city engineers, none this evening. Item eight, committee reports, report of the mayor.
I have no report.
Any other committee?
Okay, next item.
Item nine, citizen presentations, no presentations.
Next item.
Item ten, unfinished business, item, item ten A, nomination of alternate member to the planning and zoning board by Commissioner Suarez.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioner, I have a person, Stephen Rojas, for the alternated building and sona, soning. Stephen Rojas, um, I have the address here, so tomorrow I'll give you the address and all the details to, uh, the manager, and the phone number, or the clerk, to order to call him and get in touch with him. Or Mr. Plan, uh, Mr. Pen, I don't know.
We sent him a letter with, uh, with further instructions.
All right, perfect.
Based on the approval.
Stephen Rojas.
Stephen Rojas.
Okay, perfect, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item.
Item ten C, discussion and assignment of committees by mayor and city commission.
Thank you, um, this is, this is my suggestion, uh, if it's not broken, let, let's not fix it. So, this is what I propose, I know that, and, and, you know, cause I, I know that Commissioner Blanis, uh, you know, expressed an opinion about, perhaps, you know, uh, giving a commi- uh, giving a, a committee to other members and so on, and, uh, I think in the, and, and also express the opinion of, of code sharing. And haven't read a long, haven't read, uh, what, um, the attorney said and, and heard from the attorney, I think, uh, collaboration, I mean, it might lend to other things. So my opinion is that we should stay with the committees, and my suggestion is that Commissioner Rhonda Rodriguez continues with the educational committee and liaison between the city and the schools. Commissioner Luciano Suarez, and, and you tell me if you don't want to, but, but this is my suggestion. Commissioner Luciano Suarez, uh, continue with the West Miami Community Center, uh, he likes to deal with the young people over there.
You're right, how do you knew? It's a young, it's a group of, very nice group of young, young kids.
My, my father's there.
I know, I saw him. He dances very well.
Yes. Um, I suggest, uh, Commissioner Juan Blanis, uh, I think you have done an excellent job with parks and recreation, and, uh, I will suggest that you continue with that, um. Since, um, I used to have the police department committee for a long time, and since, uh, our vice mayor, uh, Candy Blanca, has taken part of the committee, actually, the police department is a better police department. So I will suggest that, and, uh, I will, you know, would like to stay with, uh, grants and special event, and, you know, um, you know, project committees, so, um, that's my suggestion, any comments from the table? Okay, all right, so, we have to vote on this, I guess, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes, next item.
Next item, we'll move to the new business agenda items. Item eleven A is a public hearing, is a special use permit for plan development that was advertised in newspaper of general circulation on April tenth, two thousand and sixteen. And, uh, and we'll read as follows. Public hearing applicant Florida Power and Light Company. Applicant requests a special use permit for plan development for the property at sixteen fifty Southwest sixty-second Avenue, West Miami, Florida, three two one five five. The property at sixteen fifty Southwest sixty-second Avenue totals two hundred and thirty feet wide by two thirty-one feet long for expansion of the Florida Power and Light substation as a development. The applicant is requesting the installation of an additional distribution center that will transform and distribute power to the local community. The top, total acreage of the R four parcel is zero point nine nineteen acres, same, same my private facilities. The applicant is requesting to modernize the complete site with a aesthetically pleasing building and twelve-feet-high decorative fence to surround the entire site with the lush landscape throughout the site and public right-of-way. And at the request of the applicant, this, uh, uh, they would like to de- uh, defer this item until the June fifteenth meeting, so, Mr. Mayor, our recommendation is that you open the public hearing and continue it until the June fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen, at seven thirty P M.
Okay, so we opened the public hearing, uh, Ms. Benner, you gonna speak?
No, just to continue to June fifteen.
Okay, so we close the public hearing, and this item will be continuing to the date?
Continue until June fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen, at seven, seven thirty.
Do we need to read the resolution, I guess not?
Uh, no, this item is deferred and postponed until June fifteen.
Okay, so that takes care of item A and B, eleven A and B, correct?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, next item would be item eleven C, a public hearing, and the applicant is fifteen, fifteen real estate holding. And this I, this, uh, public hearing was advertised in the Miami Herald on Sunday, April seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen. And read as follows. Applicant requests a special use permit for plan development for the property at fifteen fifteen Southwest sixty-seventh Avenue, West Miami, Florida, three two one five five. The property at fifteen fifteen Southwest sixty-seventh Avenue totals one hundred and twenty feet wide by one hundred and twenty feet long in the C district. The total acreage for the C parcel is zero point twenty-seven acres. The parcel of land is within the mixed, mixed-use corridor. The applicant is requesting to build a stories building on the parcel with one level of underground parking. The building consists of twenty-eight residential units with a total square footage of forty-four seven six two. Uh, and the applicant requests to, uh, to continue this item until August seventeen, two thousand and sixteen, at seven thirty P M.
August when?
Seventeen, the second meeting of August.
Okay, again, we opened the public hearing, and, uh...
Continue.
We continue this item, uh, till August seventeen, two thousand...
Since, uh, two thousand and sixteen.
Two thousand and sixteen, and we close the public hearing.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
That takes care of item C and D, correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item D is postponed until August seventeen, two thousand and sixteen. Next item on the agenda would be then item eleven F.
E.
Item E was already, um, decided on. Item eleven F, request for mitigation of lien for Miami-Dade County Code violation of the property located at nine oh one Southwest sixty-second Avenue, West Miami, Florida, and owner, City of West Miami. This is by city manager and chief court enforcement.
Madam Manager.
Thank you, um, Mr. Mayor, I think that, uh, most of you were sitting in the table where, when, um, back in twenty twelve, Mr. Penner, twenty eleven? Twenty, two thousand and nine, time flies around here. Of the, of, a portion of the back building where the old motor pool used to sit was deemed an unsafe structure by Miami-Dade County. Um, we received the violation, uh, we made, uh, some assessments via our city engineer to try to bring the building, or the hangar part of the building, uh, into compliance, but the problem was that the structure was, uh, in a state of disrepair, basically, it was not worth putting money into it. And, um, the City of West Miami demolished it to comply with the unsafe structure and demolition and/or repairs to that portion of the building. The result is, is that we now have a new building going up there. We found out, um, through the lien search process that is taking place involving the loan that we have applied for with Total Bank, that Miami-Dade County filed a lien, issued a lien against our city property, and at the time that the lien was placed, the, um, the lien had a value of ten thousand nine, five hundred ninety dollars and sixteen cents. Fast forward to the present time, the lien has accrued penalties and interest, and we're now, uh, looking at a lien that, um, totals fourteen thousand dollars and change. I initiated a conversation with the R E R Department, which is the Building Code Support Division for Miami-Dade County. I spoke to Dennis Zambrana, who has been very helpful, and Spence Erickson in trying to assist the city, in trying to mitigate the actual lien so that we can bring it down, uh, pay it out, and move forward with the closing. Um, the lien, by the way, totaled, as of Friday, May sixth, had a total of fourteen thousand two fifty-nine eighty-seven. The, uh, the county has agreed to mitigate that lien, uh, the city proceeded to pay the actual citation for five hundred and ten dollars, which we have a copy of the receipt, and we are now in a, um, mitigation negotiation, um, at, at, at that stage of this lien. And so the county has, uh, discussed the lien amongst themselves, and they have come back and offered the city a mitigation amount of three thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars, Mr. Penner?
Forty dollars.
Forty dollars and ninety percent.
And forty dollars, exactly. And, uh, I need, uh, we needed to get your approval before we proceed and, uh, and tell them that we accept this offer. Um, again, this, uh, this lien needs to be settled so that we may proceed to closing. Um, I think the county has been, um, you know, it, it has worked, the, the Department of Building Compliance, they've worked with the city in trying to, to bring down that fine. Um, my opinion is obviously, and I've seen it time and time again, when code enforcement is, is a tool for, uh, for compliance, we have paid the citation, I was hoping that they would relieve us a hundred percent of that, uh, of the fine, but that was not possible, so...
I, I, I need to ask a question here, okay? Cause if I recall correctly, as soon as this happened, we never sat on it, we took action? Or, we, we're not?
No, no, it took a while.
Why, why, why we didn't take action, because of?
Money, we didn't have the money to even demolish the structure, and we didn't have the money to retrofit it.
Okay, yeah, you answer my question. Madam Manager, do you think this is a fair number?
I think that, uh, based on the, the negotiations with the county, and I've sent out emails back and forth, and I have a packet on it, I think it's a fair and reasonable settlement, and it will enable for us to proceed to the next step and close on this, uh, building. We have bills to pay to the contractor, and we cannot delay this, so I am recommending to you that you authorize us.
Wait, 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 we need, we, we need, we need to read the, well, let, let's do the following, let's read the resolution, and before you vote, you can ask a question. Can you read the resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
So nobody jumped the gun.
Item eleven G, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the city manager to accept a mitigation offer in the amount of three thousand seven hundred forty dollars and ninety-four cents from City of West Miami on court enforcement lien placed by Miami-Dade County on court violation eight two zero one zero 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 four five eight L at the property located at nine oh one Southwest sixty-second Avenue, West Miami, Florida, providing for effective date, mayor and city commission. We have a motion by Commissioner Suarez.
Uh, before that, Commissioner Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Ms. President, your question was, we demolished it, and why, did we sit on it, did we sit on the following, and the answer was, we didn't have the money to address it? So, Madam Manager, you said when you, we applied for the loan, we found out about this lien.
That is correct.
Was that the first notice we received of this lien?
Yes.
Or were, were we not notified throughout time? When we put a lien on a property, don't we send out notices?
We filed it with the clerk of the court, and we sent a copy of the recorded lien to the property owner.
Did we not get such?
This is the first time I saw this, uh, the recording of this lien.
Wait, you're saying we did get such notice?
I'm...
And what do we do with it?
Of the lien itself, no.
No, not of the lien, of the violation.
We got notice of the fine, of the violation.
So did we not notice?
Until you don't correct the violation, the, the, the lien, I mean, it just accumulates.
The fines accumulate, there was no record, at least our office.
Once you correct, the violation then is when the lien is placed on the property. We were not noticed of the lien until they did the title search. It may have come, their forms are very, like a postcard, but there's a lot of mail that gets received here. It could have come and not been received accidentally.
And knowing what we know about the process, because we do the same to our residents.
No, we send envelopes.
We send them in, in envelopes, and usually certified mail.
Certified mail.
Wouldn't we have known that we were accruing costs throughout, throughout all this time?
You do, but we, we were able to correct the violation in subsequent years. So once we corrected the violation, the, the actual, uh, fine, which was a five hundred and ten dollar, uh, violation, we knew that was due, but we didn't know that it had been placed a lien on that. Because we did not get notice of the lien. We knew that the five hundred and ten dollars were due, cause anytime they issue a citation, you're due that, that, that amount.
I had never received a copy of the lien, at least my office, never.
We never received.
We knew we had a running fine as a result of our inability to either repair or correct the violation or demolish the structure.
You're dealing with...
We knew that those fines were running.
Remember...
We never knew that it had become a lien against the city property.
Correct, this can...
We knew the fines were running, so we knew we were...
Until you clear the violation, which took us years to clear. But at that point, once we cleared the violation, we had a building permit and everything else to clear the violation, the lien was never brought up, nor was the fine brought up, as far, we assumed that because we were government, they weren't gonna do this.
So we screwed up, now we gotta pay the price, basically.
We didn't screw up, they know, they, they fined us the five ten.
I will not put it that way.
But we, we never, we were never noticed of the lien, where, whether they, it's, like I said, it gets sent, uh, cause I just received one at my house for a boat, same as Mr. Yellow.
Right, we know the process, we, we, we kinda knew what's happening.
But they sent, it's a postcard, it's a postcard, it's, uh, the, when they place the lien, it's not a official mail or anything like that, it's a postcard, like all the junk mail you get in the mail. That it could have come here and been discarded as junk mail, yes it can. But we don't do it in that process, we send the certified mail, so we know that you signed for it, and we receive the...
Can, can I, the confirmation?
And I apologize for the screwed up, I, I retract it.
No, no.
I retract those words, that was, that, those were not the proper words, I apologize. We misplaced, we possibly misplaced.
I'm not saying dating send it, but...
And I, I officially apologize for the, for my choice of words.
It comes as a postcard.
But, okay, let me, let me, uh, let me clarify something, because I, I personally got involved in this, okay? And the reason I got involved in this, because due to my nature that, as you know, I'm an architect, uh, and the conversations between the Office of Public Works and the county, they never stopped. So from the day that we got the violation, the conversation was, A, we need a structure, B, how can we remediate? B, how can we remediate the, the issue? We, we went back and forth. So, so the conversation never stopped. That type of conversation, I, I, the goodwill to, to, to correct the violation. But by the same token, we needed a facility. We needed a facility, and we fought to keep the facility. Now, what happened was that no matter how much money we spent, which we didn't have, you still couldn't correct it. It, it was beyond repair. So, so we knew that this was trying to, we were trying to negotiate and, and go back and forth to, to, to make sure that, you know, we kept the facility and, you know, and we repaired the facility. But there's certain things that we have to abide, and it has to be by code. It has, it has to do with life safety, et cetera, et cetera. And so finally, we, you know, we gave up, you know?
Commissioner, to the point that our engineers provided us the repair of the plans for repair at, at no cost. That's how bad we were as far...
So we did what we had to do. That's what I'm hearing. We did what we had to do.
No, no, we tried.
But we're still, we still have to pay. That's the part I can't put together here.
Because, again...
The law, again.
We did what we had to do.
But you, if you, if you were given notice, whether you accepted it, realized it, acknowledged it, it still accumulates.
So we did what we had to do, but we're still having to pay the paper at this point?
Yes, yes.
To, to, to close that...
That's why I asked, is that a fair amount?
Can I get my hands around it? No, but I understand what everyone's telling me, so thank you. Do I agree? No, but I understand. I, I understand.
We, we called officials. They came over here. They looked at it. We had dialogues, you know?
And the longer... I just feel better knowing we did what we had to do. That makes me feel better than knowing that.
We did. We had no money at the time to address the situation. We tried to look at it every which way we could. Um, it was not salvageable. Therefore, it was demolished when the time came. Um, we are, we are now in the situation where we need to go to closing because we're, we're locked in into a specific interest rate with a loan, and there's been some delays, this being one of them. So should the commission approve this issue tonight? Tomorrow, we go downtown and we pay this amount so that, um, we can obtain a, an unofficial release of lien copy, which we will supply to the city attorney and to the legal team that's involved with the closing of this loan, so that we can proceed to close.
Thank you all for your explanations. I, I, I do understand at this point.
Any further questions? We have a motion on the table by Commissioner Suarez. I need a second.
A second.
Okay, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Blanca?
It's okay.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Uh, yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Um, for the record, Mr. Mayor, the payment for the release of the lien and the, under the mitigated amount will come out from the soft costs that the city is contributing to the project. And so this does not hinder or reduce the value of the money that we are borrowing from Total Bank, which is $597,000, to see the completion of the building.
Okay. Next item?
Item 11H, this item is sponsored by Commissioner Blanes, and is the "Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami declaring principles of inclusion for individuals with autism and other special needs, and urging national, state, and local businesses and residential communities consistent with these principles, providing for effective date."
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
This item, is yours?
Well, uh, yeah, this is to, you know, stand together in solidarity with, um, the city attorney, uh, for the city of Coral Gables, uh, our neighboring city. Yeah, it's a good and decent, fine, uh, outstanding young attorney. Um, I believe, uh, his children are autistic, and, uh, this was an initiative of, of his. And, um, um, he, he asked that other cities also stand in solidarity with him. So, you know, I felt that, uh, that we should too. And this is a good cause. This is a good and just cause, so...
As a matter of fact, I, uh, I was surprised. I went to a birthday party this weekend, and there's a surgeon at Baptist that has three children, and all three has autism. And they found out after they had the third one. Uh, so, and it had to do with the combination of husband and wife. And I, I don't know anything about that, but it's incredible.
Motion.
Second.
Can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner, uh, Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Commissioner, thank you for bringing this to us.
Excellent.
Madam Manager, can you send a letter to, um...
We will.
To, um, God, his name skips...
Greg Lean.
Craig Lean, yes.
We're also going to submit a copy, if it's okay with you all, to the Miami-Dade County League of Cities. That way, they can also add it to the pool of cities that are adopting.
Thank you.
Can I make a suggestion on the next item? Um, can you read it into the record, but this item was already, uh, presented in the, uh...
Well, I, I, I do have something else to say about this.
Okay, but let's, let's read it into the record.
Item 11I, "City Attorney Five-Year Contract Reconsideration by Commissioner Blanes."
Commissioner Blanes.
I believe the, uh, city attorney, uh, clarified that, uh, he could not have a five-year contract. And further, I don't think that we are in any position to give anyone a contract. Uh, I know that these, uh, that, that the word "contract" here has been spoken in the past. You know, giving the city manager a contract, giving the attorney a contract, giving so-and-so a contract, the city engineer, you know, uh, we're basically a legislative body. According to our city charter, we do not give contracts to anyone. We appoint, we ratify, and we remove. That's all we can do. So we cannot give a contract. So this word "contract" should be stricken from the, from, uh, from the record, because we would be going against our, our own city charter.
I, I need to hear from, from our council on that.
And, and, and as, uh, and as we appoint the city attorney, we can also remove him in any, uh, commission meeting by a majority of vote.
For cost.
According to our city charter, we can remove the city manager or the city attorney or the city clerk by a majority vote.
Mr. Mayor, I think...
I need clarification from the city council. Yes?
I think that you have all the right in the world to just go ahead and enter, authorize the manager to enter into a contract with the, uh, city, uh, engineer. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, now, for the record, uh, you agree, uh, with the charter?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You hear that? Um, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay, so make that part of the record, please. Give us, let's, uh, go into the next item.
Item 11J, "Request for 2016-17 Budget Hearing Dates by City Manager."
Thank you, and, uh, believe it or not, budget time is right around the corner, and I'm hoping...
My favorite time.
I'm sorry?
My favorite time. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah, my favorite time as well, and Mercedes and all of those who labor to put together a good document for the city for the year. And then all these unexpected items come up. No matter how much you plan, there's always something that pops up. That being said, I wanted for us to look at a calendar only because we've got some very strict guidelines to follow, uh, set by the Department of Revenue. Uh, pursuant to our charter and the provisions of the Department of Revenue that dictates, uh, the budget process, we will be submitting the preliminary budget, which is the manager's budget, to the commission, um, on July 20th, 2016 at 7:30 as part of your regular city commission meeting. Fast forward, August, the tax, uh, the property appraiser's office will be sending tax notices out. As you know, we cannot hold our budget hearings the same days at the Miami, as the Miami-Dade County Public Schools or the Miami-Dade County Board of County Commissioners. So we are suggesting to you that we keep the regular meeting agenda light for the meeting of September 7th and the regular meeting of September 21st. And both dates, one would become your tentative public hearing on the city budget on September 7th. And the 21st of September, uh, we propose that we, that you all, um, publish a final budget public hearing on the city budgets. These dates do not conflict with the BCC or the Dade County School Board, uh, public hearings. So unless you want to set special meetings during the month of September, uh, our recommendation would be to keep those agenda, uh, as light as possible and devote those efforts to the budget. That would be our recommendation. And obviously, so that you all can plan, uh, vacation time's coming up, so, um, if you're making plans to be out, I wanted to put these dates out there so that we can start planning for the process as well.
So September 7, tentative, September 21, final?
Yes.
Thank you.
That would be our recommendation.
Point clarification, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
On the other item, the item, uh, section 4.06, City Manager, I'm sorry, City Attorney and City Engineer, the council shall by majority vote, appoint city attorney. However, the city attorney and the city engineer may be removed for cost at any time by a firmer vote of four-fifths of the city council at any regular scheduled meeting.
Thank you for the information. Uh, are we okay with the, uh, with the dates? Well, let's talk about the dates. Let's, let's, let's finish one item, the dates. Are we okay with the dates?
No, that's what I want to talk...
Okay, go ahead.
I wanted the manager to give me a, in writing, those dates she has, because I have to go out of the country, and I don't know exactly the date that she proposed, and the dates I have to go, I would be out.
If you can, Madam Manager, if you can send us a calendar or...
We will.
In the case, in the case of the, uh, Commissioner Suarez, give him a copy of the calendar, uh, so, so we can plan.
It's in his packet, but I will send it to you via email as well. We have not sent a calendar because we wanted for you to...
So it is in the baggage?
Look at the dates to see, uh, whether you would be in agreement with those dates. That is attached to my report this evening, and it was made part of the, uh, of the agenda item package.
Of your report?
It isn't, uh, no. It isn't the report. It's not in the package.
It's not attached to my report, but it was issued. Um, give me one second.
Commissioner Suarez, it's in this memo, uh...
No, no, we have calendars in our package as well.
This is, uh, this is an agenda item.
No, no, but it is part of this package.
Here it is. It's here.
It's an agenda item.
Is here? Is it sent here?
You can have my copy, sir. I have more.
No, no, no. If I see it here, I, I should get it.
Okay, let's, let's move to, to, to the next item, okay?
Are those acceptable?
I don't have it.
I don't know why. Uh, Commissioner Rodriguez, did you get yours? Do you have it?
I have it digitally. I, I don't have a paper copy.
We don't have it on you. She's, uh...
I will make sure that you get not only a paper copy, yeah? I will be more than happy to give you a copy tomorrow.
I want to sit down and look, and look my dates, and then take my mind.
Okay.
Okay?
No, I'm not cybernetic. I am...
Next, 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 next item.
You are intellect, cybernetic intellectual, or intellectual cybernetic person.
Mr. Q, you hear this, right? Mr. Q, to the end of it.
Uh, it is a little bit after 10, please. Next item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item 11K, "Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami ratifying Resolution 2016-03 that authorize the city manager to execute loan commitment letter with Total Bank and further authorize the city mayor and/or his, uh, designate to execute any and all documents requisite to effectuate the intent of the loan commitment in favor of Total Bank, including but not limited to a promissory note, mortgage and construction loan, and related documents to complete the construction of a two-story, 2,400 square feet of the offices of the City of West Miami Building Department, providing for an effective date, Mayor and City Commission."
I have a question for the city attorney.
Yes, sir.
Uh, since my name is mentioned over here, and, um, are they allowed to leave my house?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. I just want to...
You're in official duty.
For the record, yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, it's one story. I don't know where the two-story came from.
That's right.
Wishful thinking.
Okay, correct it for the record.
You know what happened? You have that eyebrow there. They, they, from there up, they, they counted a second. Okay, so is that the last item? Uh, we need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Good to the order.
Good of, for the good of the order, Mr. Penna has a request...
Mr. Penna?
For a public, National Public Works Week.
I almost forgot. Uh, this week is National Public Works Week, and we would like to request a proclamation for the Public Works Department.
Absolutely.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, anything else in the good of the order? Need a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night.
Aye.